For those who might not know, that corner of the room has a table. On that table are some papers in regards to what we're going to talk about today. So if you want some miscellaneous paraphernalia about this meeting, it's back there on the table. And looking at the agenda, we've called the meeting to order. And our second item is public comment. We have a list of people that have signed up. When I call your name, if you would come to the podium to my right, speak into the microphone, give us your name and address, and we'll start with Captain Kane Fairclough. These comments are about agenda items only.
Okay, this is Captain Kane Fairclough. I represent the Lockwood Inlet Association. I'm the president. I'm here to speak about the agenda item action, emergency action for dredging of the Lockwood Folly Inlet by the Miss Katie. Last year, we had a Miss Katie project that went really, really, really good. The two years before that, we relied on the Corps. They were very slack, basically didn't show up, and we had two algae blooms. With those algae blooms, they issued a swimming advisory here at the bridge. So one thing that we've learned for the Inlet Association, of course, public safety is very important for the inlet and passage, which is stated in the agenda items. But with the water quality, that affects every resident of Holden Beach. It affects everybody that vacations here. If we do not have clean water, then we definitely are having a serious problem. With that clean water, it also supports the nurseries and estuaries of the backwater. One final thing I'd like to kind of let you guys know, when it comes to Lockwood Folly Inlet, for every dollar spent dredging in Carolina Beach, it brings back about $29 to the local economy. We see Lockwood being a similar thing. That's done by Dr. Dumas from the Car- he was working from UNCW. They have a new schedule coming out in two weeks, and I'll get you a copy of that. But the new numbers are exuberant of how important Carolina Beach is to the local economy. And of course, Lockwood is important here. So for the Inlet Association, we look at the three main things. It's public safety, people not getting in trouble out there, boats capsized and families getting hurt, the economic aspect of it, how important it is to the community, and then, of course, the environmental aspect. Right now, Lockwood at low tide is around two feet. It is extremely dangerous, it's extremely hazardous, and this is the same type of situation that caused the algae blooms three years ago, two years ago, and then last year, we were in really good shape because we did have the Miss Katie project. It was phenomenal. That project seems to last about six months, so I would strongly recommend you to consider voting today and approving a Miss Katie project for Lockwood Folly Inlet in partnership and using the town of Holden Beach as a permit. Cool, thank you, appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Captain.
Sylvia Page, 111 Charlotte Street. I would say, I want to reiterate everything that Kane just said, basically what I was going to say, but on a personal level, I can say that I was through that inlet a couple of weeks ago, and it's pretty treacherous. And we're getting ready to move into our busy season when we're having all of our tourists here and a lot of our residents that are coming down that haven't maybe been here during the winter and who utilize that inlet to go out to do their recreational activities, whether it's boating or fishing. So I would also encourage you to take the appropriate action item for today to adopt the resolution and seek the funds to get that inlet dredged. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, folks, Brent Shaver, 121 Torpen. I just want to come and strongly urge you to consider creating a situation where we can have a firehouse that could be manned 24 hours a day, 12 months a year. Please get that at Eros Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Did I fail to mention anybody's name that signed up? All right, we'll be moving on to number three, and welcome Chief Todd here. If you will come to the podium, Chief, and just tell us an update in your own words. And when you get through, Commissioners, I'll ask you questions or just a very informal approach back and forth. You're fine.
I thank y'all for having me here today for an update for Fire Department. I gave y'all a handout of some of the things I'm going to talk about. Like to start out just saying that we have grown the Fire Department here. We've got 19 full-time employees now, 10 part-time employees, and 10 volunteers. And just to give y'all some background, you take an average 2,000-foot house, and their recommendation is it takes 16 to 17 personnel to do all the tasks that need to be done on the fire service. So that being said, we're still a long way from being where we need to be as far as staffing level. We rely heavily on each way to help us to meet those numbers. We can average probably about 10 folks on average. Sometimes a little better than that, sometimes a little worse than that, depending on, you know, I have six full-time people just working at a time. They do three shifts. They work 24 on, 72 off, 48 on, 72 off. That's the shift they work. They seem to, it's a little bit different than most fire departments work. We've probably done one, I know we're the only one in the county that's doing that shift, but the guys seem to work like it because they get a three-day break between shifts. Gives them a little downtime that they can rest. And they, and that depends on, you know, if they're in the area, they come back, do we have a structured fire call? That helps out on getting that number up. So that's where we get the number above the six, which usually myself, City Chief, and a couple of pay guys will come back and a few volunteers. Sometimes we get those. Our volunteer numbers have just gone back up. We were down to about five. We've had some of those folks that just recently started, got on board, so we're trying to get them trained up. Limiting the amount they can do at this point on that. The next thing is the budget that I had on the list that I gave y'all. We started out, I've done a three-year projection there, this current budget year coming up in July when we started, our budget's going to be about $2.2 million, $251,000. And this current budget we're in is $2,142,297. And in 2023, it's $1,965,338. So we're growing somewhere around $100,000 a year, based on what we get in growth and increases in fire fees. Fire fees, you know, it's set up to where the only way we get money is if homes are built and businesses are built in the area. I like our area staying quiet, but, you know, without growth, we don't increase in money. In this current budget that's coming up, we got about $54,000 increase is all we got from fire fees. Some of the money that we put into budget to make up the other $50,000 is from past fire fees where people sold property or whatever and caught the fire fees up that we're using to make up the other $100,000, the other $50,000. So that being said, half of that $50,000 that we got went in just increases in insurance. Part of it went in other small line items that we had increased for maintenance and different things. And then, we always try to give our folks a salary increase every year to try to promote keeping them. We're two people short right now. They, I got the interview process on the 24th to set up to try to get those two spots filled. We done the process first of March. We had 15 people that applied. We sent it out. We only had three people respond back that said they would be there for the process. Only two of them showed up. I hired one of those two. I was three short. So right now, it's just struggling to get people to want to work in the fire service. It's like the same it is with the police department. People just not into doing public service type stuff right now. Contract, the last contract that we done with Holden Beach was in 2003. That contract is still, as far as I'm concerned, a good contract to work with. I don't see any issues with it. The, that's strictly up y'all. Y'all don't want to see anything to do with the contract, but there is one clause in there that if we do sometime in the future go to 24-hour staffing, that would have to be looked at, because it says we can't be in the building after 10 o'clock at night. And, you know, the town's always working receptions with us. If we have a storm or something coming in and y'all not doing mandatory evacuation, I leave people without the station, because I want the people to be here to protect the people over here. So we staff it 24/7 during a storm, as long as y'all don't do mandatory evacuation. If you do mandatory evacuation, we evacuate as well. We also have contracts with the town of Barnum Town and with the county. So we have three contracts, three entities to be contracted with. Back to fire fees, fire fees were started in 2000. They've been modified twice, once in 2007, the last time in 2017. That has to go through the General Assembly to be, changes made to it, the Commissioners have to make that request for it to be modified. And to be honest with you, there's a lot of people, you know, a lot of fire districts now that's paying more in fire fees than they're paying in taxes, the fire fee system, because it's based off of key square footage. And I do have the legislature with me, and we can, if y'all have questions about what different fees are, I can get into that. We have a seven-person board of directors that governs the fire department. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The board members are made up of some of the firemen and community members. And they'll have to have at least two community members on the board at any one time. And right now, we have, the majority of them are community members. One of them lives on the island. The rest of them live in the fire district on the mainland side as far as community members, and then we have two firemen that sit on the board right now, so for the makeup of it. We have three stations. The one, the main station that has a thumb road over here, the station on the island at 572 Ocean Boulevard West, and we have a station at 2707 Central Road for our coverage area. And we cover everything out to what I call the Clambay Bridge, where Clambay Southern Village is at on Stone Chimney Road. We cover most of Cedar Grove up to Grissette Road and all of Grissette Road. It cuts back across and cuts across at Stanbury and 130. And then it cuts across to Kirby Road and Bozen Neck Road. And then we have everything from Bozen Neck Road all the way to the Slut River, back around Cover Island. All of Barnum Town is in the fire district. The, that's the general area of our response area. Calls, last year, we ran 218 calls on the island, 591 in Station 1's area, which is where the Southern Road Station, and then 102 calls in Station 3's area, which I got it broke up. It cuts off the Central Road where the Citco's at and all that area, Station 3's area, and then everything about this way, Station 1. And of course, the island is strictly by itself. And then I also had Barnum Town broke out, and we had 28 calls in Barnum Town last year. And I do that just so, just like I'm here asking questions for y'all or talking to y'all today, if one of them has questions, I can tell them how many calls we have in the area. So I have that different broken out as well, but it's covered by Station 1's area. We had 20, we had 145 calls that were overlapping calls last year, where we had two more than one call done at a time. 22 of those were in the town. And I went back and done a little bit of research, and I could go back as far as 2010. And 2010, we had 73 calls on the island, just to give you a comparison of where we were at to where we at today. Some of the challenges, or some of the projects we got working on, we're trying to get a new main station built. We were able to get some money appropriated from the General Assembly, a million dollars to go towards that project. We hadn't received that money yet, so that's why we're waiting on to move forward with it. We tried to do it two years ago, and the architect and everything told us that we were looking somewhere around in the 4 million range for the building. It came back at 5.7 million. So we could have done the project, but we'd been strapped for money, we wouldn't be able to do anything else. I told my board, I don't want to work that way. If we need to, if something happened, we wouldn't have any money to be able to fix the problem or anything like that. So we put the project on hold, and then we were able to acquire this money. Hopefully, we're going to get it done before end of the budget year. Next engine we've got on our replacement list is the engine that's on the island. It comes up in 2027. And just to give you an idea, that engine, when we bought it, we paid 300 and, no, 200 and some thousand dollars. Right now, an engine identical to that one, it's going to cost you about a million dollars to 1.2 million dollars. And you'll be waiting three to four years for it. So we got to be starting looking, if we're going to replace it in '27, we got to start looking at ordering, here's sometime shortly. They're three to four years out on orders, on replacement. One change that we looked at, and I sat down and talked very strongly with the Department of Emergency or the guys from Office of State Farm Marshal on our rating, and we have two, we had two ladder trucks. They are over $2 million to pieces now. So we looked at our point system and how it would affect our rating and everything, and they said I could put a service truck in place, and I had a spare engine, so we moved, we got rid of one of our ladder trucks. It's a 2,000 model. We was spending a lot of money on upkeep on it to refurbish it, and it was going to cost us 300, about $350,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. And we chose to give it to another department that's near us, so it'd still be available to us if we need it. And they said they could afford to do the upkeep, maintenance to it, to get it where it needs to be. So we're going to be down to one ladder truck, a service truck to use as far as having ground ladders and other things that were prior to the service truck, that will still meet the intent of our rating. We've increased three personnel since the last time we got raided. The state is on a five-year cycle now to come seed the fire departments. So we're not due up again until probably 2027. We got done last in '22. That's kind of where we at on that side of it. He sat down and went over everything with me. He said, I don't see where it's going to hurt you. You should be able to maintain the same grade that we have now, which is a three. And the one is the best you can get. Most insurance companies will not do anything for residential property below a six. Some of them will do a five if it's like rental property like the town has, and depending on how they classify it, they will come down to a five as far as saving you money on your homeowner's insurance on that rating. So with three, all we're saving, the biggest people we're saving in that area is commercial businesses. All commercial is affected from six below. And as you know, we don't have a whole lot of commercial growth in our area right now. So, and he felt strongly that we could maintain or improve with no problem, but they had the personnel that I had on since the last rating and the training that we're doing. Personnel and your training are your two highest points given in the rating schedule. Some challenges we're facing, like I mentioned earlier, is keeping personnel. We boosted our retirement, our 401K, so we can try to maintain people to kind of match what county, county and the state and county and city governments can do as far as the retirement plans, so that they're actually getting the same amount of money in their 401K plan as they would if they were in a retirement plan, you know, through the county or the city, state. And like I mentioned, the cost of trucks, equipment's the same way. Everything to do with fire service, and then everything's pretty much on a wait time. Turnout gear, just a set of turnout gear, it's probably about $8,000 right now, just a complete set, to get everything that they need to wear. It's on a 10-year, NFPA recommends it has to be changed every 10 years. So every 10 years, you know, you have to buy new. And then with all the push and stuff about cancer in the fire service now, they've recommended that every firefighter that have on pay staff, it has at least two sets, so that, you know, if they do have a fire, that gear can be taken out of service and washed and cleaned, decanaminated, and put, you know, and they have a second set they can wear. We're not to that point yet that we can afford to do that, but we do have spare sets that they can swap into and wear. Each individual don't just, I don't have turnout gear that each individual can have their second set. You know, we just, it's a shared process. Some of the things that the guys have to keep up with in their daily duties is hydrate. We have to test the hydrate one time a year. It used to be twice a year, but states moved it to, RISO says now you only have to do them one time a year. The hydrate on the island, we usually do in the fall after the season, so that we're not interfering with, you know, during the busy time of the season. Hose testing, hose has to be tested once a year, and each truck that we have has to be pump tested at least once a year. And then, of course, truck checks have to be done daily on the trucks, so to make sure everything is in place and working and we don't have any problems with them. That's kind of some of the things that they have to do on a daily basis. And that's pretty much my summary. I will tell you one more thing that I printed out. I looked at the day of the week and the time of day that we had the most calls on the island. Saturday is our busiest day last year. We're going to have 45 calls on Saturday, and Sunday is the next busiest with 41. The time of day, 1:00 in the evening was our busiest time, and it ran from, most of them were from like 8:00 till 8:00 at night is our busiest time frame, and we had the most calls on the island. And it varies anywhere from 12 to that 22 calls during that time frame.
I wish everybody in the room could have seen how hard your staff was working over at the trolley shop on Jordan Boulevard whenever that caught on fire. Those of us that were there and observing, you were working at midnight. It was an impressive time, sad time, but I was very impressed, as others were, with professionalism that you guys showed, and we appreciate what you do.
Yes, sir. I don't know what it's been since the first year, but we've had a lot of fires in our fire districts since the first year. Just, I guess, our turn to add some.
Yeah. Commissioners, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have two. If you go 24/7 on the island, is that going to benefit the homeowners as far as insurance rates? Will they drop?
It will not affect the insurance rates, but what it will do is increase our response time to the folks on the island if we're doing it 24 hours a day. But as far as insurance purposes, it's not. That's already bigger than the staffing that I have.
Okay.
Because the only way I can do it right now is I would move some personnel around. Right now, the way we're staffing is I have three folks at Station 1 when I'm at full staff, and three folks at Station 3. And then in the summertime, and we're looking, starting this year shortly, somewhere around May 1st, we're trying to do it from May 1st to September 30th, depending on our staffing levels, to staff the island during the day from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We may start a little late, because like I say, I got hired the folks this year. And the reason I do that is that's when we have the most folks on the island and the most calls during the daytime, based on the time frame that I gave them. So what I do during that time is I move two folks to the island, two folks to Station 1, two firefighters to Station 3. It works a lot better having three people on a unit, but like I say, that's the way we have to operate, and we've operated that way for a long time. I just hired three people in July last year to get the three people on each shift that we're doing right now. And I've done that to try to instruct, keep them struggling with part-timers or having, getting a volunteer to come in and fill in when we were staffing the island during the summertime or the busiest season. Now I don't have to worry about, if I'm at full staff, I don't have to worry about trying to get a part-timer to work to be able to cover the island.
What's your impact going to be on that with your, I know your staff, and like you said, you're shorthanded. When these homes on Stone Chimney and Stanbury, that subdivision of Stanbury Road, they're starting to put houses in there. When all those houses, let's say in the summer, when we have all these extra people, what do you foresee that's going to be a serious issue?
Yeah, it's just a wait and see on how, it depends on the age group that comes in. Of course, accident level may go up as far as motor vehicle accidents we're having to respond to, but the medical calls just depends a lot on the age group as far as medical calls that we have to respond to.
Well, the traffic, I think the traffic impact from those roads aren't, I don't think, set up to handle, especially Stanbury. I think there's already been more accidents. It seems like it's Stanbury and Stone Chimney or Old Ferry right now, I've noticed. So I know that's going to be a string.
I don't know why that seems to run in a spell. Usually when we have one, we'll have three or four brought back to back, and we haven't had one in a while yet, you know, since the last one was knocking wood. But they suddenly run in spells there when we have them. I don't know why. I don't know if they, it wasn't going to fix that, other than they tried putting a four-way stop sign there.
Yeah.
And most of them, to be honest with you, is people, they stop, but then they don't see somebody when they pull out. And there's been a couple of them where the people just run a stop sign.
Thank you.
Well, I've got two questions, too. You say we've only got one ladder truck now, and that ladder truck will be housed at the main station?
Right now, it's housed at the Station 3.
Yes, sir.
Because the size of, that's the only building I can get in here.
Correct.
If we get a new building built, it'll probably move up here.
Got it. So in other words, the size of the building we have here now is adequate for the size vehicle we have here now. Right? And that one's good till 2027?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it was replaceable, to be replaced with the same basic size vehicle?
Yes, sir.
Cool. All right, so that's, what would it take to make that building where we could have somebody in it around the clock? You said 8:00 to 8:00 is the most calls, and that's when your guys are here, 8:00 to 8:00?
They hear it from 7:00 to 7:00.
7:00 to 7:00, well, that's close enough, I guess.
And it varies, like the year before that, the times were like, what we were covering at 7:00 to 7:00, tight and frame, some of them drifted over a little bit, you know, in that 8:00 to 9:00 ring. It just depends, you know, it varies from year to year. But the majority of the calls are from that 7:00 to 7:00 time that we're covering.
Well, what would it take to make that building where they could stay up there at 8:00?
You'd have to have sleeping quarters, and that's going to require pretty much the building being tore down and new one put in place.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'll add on that, because I've heard a lot of talk about new building 24/7. Is ball in our court, ball in your court? How does this come together?
Well, the building belongs to the town.
Yes.
We do not have the funds to replace the building. So that's my ball in y'all's court about what we need to do as far as the station.
Okay.
If you build it, I'll put the two people there.
Chief, thanks for coming today. Let me stick this up here. Well, we understand that we are responsible for the building, but we need to find out what your requirements are, how many people to house, how big it has to be for your equipment and, you know, and your trucks. Can you help us figure that out? Because we've got to have some idea how big it needs to be and whether or not it'll fit on the existing location.
It can fit where it's at. We can tear that one down and put it back where it's at. I wouldn't build it for less than sleeping at least four people.
Okay.
Because at some point, I would love to increase the staff where we have at least three on the truck. If a volunteer wants to come pull duty- If a volunteer wants to come pull duty, and I, I have a young man right now that, that he called, he said he called, he, he called several fire departments in the area, from New Hanover, Fender, all the way down to, to Brunswick. And, uh, he actually lives in Charlotte. He comes down two days a month and pulls duty. And he stays at the station when he's pulling duty, he'll pull a, he, he, he usually gets like here at twelve noon and he'll pull till seven o'clock the next morning. So he's given his time, he wanted to come to the beach and learn how a firefighter was at the beach. He's a young man, but he's got all his certification and training, medical certification, everything. So I told him, yeah, I'll give you a try. I said, as long as you give me two days a month, I said, I'll work with you. Cause it helps out. And when I'm, even the volunteers staffing, if they're there, signed up for duty and staffing, they count the same as a full-time employee. Now, if they're on call and coming back to the fire scene, which they, is what they, the state looks at, they consider them being on call if they're volunteering and even the pay staff. If they come back to a call, they don't count as a full-time person being there. So it counts as a different rating process. But if they sign up for duty and they're actually at the station, it don't matter whether they're paid or volunteer, they get the same credit.
Given the way the county's growing, um, and if we can get this station built, what's your take on actually being able to staff it, given all the needs around us and everything else? I know that's kind of a loaded question, but, uh, we don't wanna build it and not be able to put people in it, so to speak.
Well, like I say, I, the two people I'm putting there now through the summertime, I would move there permanently. So they would be, they would be staffed, at least two folks at all three stations there. At least I'm getting the truck out of the building, we getting somebody on the scene that can start mitigating the, the situation. And, uh, a lot of times that's, that's a big, big part of it. If you get somebody there quick, especially with fires, um, and I just say historically, most of the fires we have on the island are nighttime and they are beyond, they, they've begun beyond a containment fire. They're, they're outmended, so it takes a lot more personnel to do something with them. And, but the houses as close as they are on the island, usually we lose two, two of them when we have them, at least.
So how do we move forward developing the requirements you need to staff that?
The new building.
Right, but then we gotta figure out how big, you know, that kind of stuff, how do we do that?
The, it's just sitting down, putting a group together and sit down and, and draw up some plans and, and see where, what size we need. The building there currently is four bay, I think we can reduce it to three bay. My take on it, I would put, I would face it towards the Boulevard, which, and, uh, put some, put some parking area on the, on the car beach drive side. That's just some preliminary ideas I have.
So this group, is it your folks, our folks, combination of?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a combination?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that location is suitable? I mean, it's in a flood plain, I assume.
Yes, sir, but my ideas on that is you block it up like three or four blocks high, have sealed blocks. The water never rose more than about, uh, a foot and a half in that building that I'm aware of. Anytime that we've had a storm or anytime, anytime I've left folks there. Now, when, if we're not there, I can't tell you, I can see the marks on the wall, you can go there and see the mark for how high the water's been in there. But it's never been over, uh, to my knowledge, more than a foot and a half, two foot at the most inside the building. So if you put four blocks high and seal the blocks, then that will keep most of the water out. Plus, if it's sealed, even if it does get in the building, you can go there and wash it and clean it. Where it was, it's gonna suck it up, the insulation's gonna suck it up. And, you know, then you're in a process, you're gonna have to do something with it eventually if it gets something up.
Is that okay, Tim, or?
I, I got a question.
As long as it's elevated and built to ASC twenty-four standards, uh, which should be like a floodproofing requirement similar to, um, the lift stations. But it has to be from a strictly facility, it has to be elevated, above the base of elevation. The site is probably the best site on the island for the station. What you gotta keep in mind is, is the way the building's designed now, is part of the problem of trying to put anybody in, is the actual way the old building was designed. It's also not built floodproofed materials. Every time it gets wet, it requires mediation, um, which is what he's describing, not having to. It, it's not an undoable task, uh, the design of the building. We can come up, this staff, my staff, y'all can come up with a concept, but an engineer and an architect will have to design it. It'll have, it'll have, because it's gonna be an enclosed garage, it's gonna have particular features, it'll have to have, uh, per the building code to comply with the standards that they will need. And that's just where the truck's being down there. This wouldn't be my first one, I think this will be my fourth one, uh, fire station. It'll be my second, third, seventh station. But that is a very doable area, it's very doable, especially if you're gonna reduce it, say it needs, only require a few bays. Does need to be turned towards the, uh, for egress and ingress for the trucks, turned toward Ocean Boulevard. Also accommodate what you're gonna do there. And you gotta remember that what we don't have now, we will have then, we, we can have what we designed it, is we have two things, we have architectural features, we can get it, put it in the neighborhood. And we can also elevate the first story and the second story to the needs, to our needs. The second story now is basically the area in the trusses and the rafters that was left, that we actually created something in the first chance we got, so.
Yeah, kinda, kinda made it just a, a, a area they could go hang out and watch TV and stuff while, you know, during, during a little bit of the downtime there.
Best we can do to comply, to get people over here for the day. But it is a redo, um, and it is doable. And I think if it's done right, it'll be a, a, just a wonderful asset for the town, public safety wise, number one. And number two is, is that we, I don't know how many things we've put in that building over the years. I know that it's been repaired numerous times, and if we do have a major flood, we end up having to go in there and do the mediation at the time. And it lacks basic facilities just for the staff when they're there during the day. Just, I mean, just down there, so it's lacking, it's got all the, the custodial features, I guess is the best way to put it, the bathroom. I mean, you, you really won't want to stop in there and use the bathroom. And it's just, it's, time for another reason.
And it was originally built in the eighties, it was designed for not to be staffed by volunteers, and, so that's why we were at the time. And, you know, it's, it's well, that'll use, it's useful.
Four down meters.
Might have been modified to be down, it's almost unusable now.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed if chief needs, uh, an officer or something down there where the patrol officer can be more in the middle of the island. You know, even when, you know, during a storm or whatever, you know, some of this area does get cut off, he can have a place for an officer to be down that way.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Chief, you mentioned certifications, uh, not being familiar with the fire department certification. Are, are any of your full-timers, uh, does that include paramedics or is that a county function that's handed off?
What we do is what we call first responding.
Okay.
So our folks are either medical responders or EMTs. I do have some that's, uh, that's sort of about above the EMT level, but they can only practice at EMT level because that's at what level we're responding at. So if they do get on a paramedic truck and the paramedic truck asks them to do something and they have the higher, higher level certification, then yes, they can use it. But on the same, we can't use anything until they arrive at a higher level.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
I just don't, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm not intimately familiar with the difference between a paramedic and EMT. But you did answer my question.
The medical responders are folks that can do, uh, the basic stuff. An EMT, they have a little bit more things they can do, they, they can, uh, do more meds, do a little bit higher level care. They have what they call an EMT, uh, A, which are able to do IVs and do, and, and stuff like that. And, uh, give med, medicine, uh, through needles and stuff.
So are those, are those folks separate from your base core function firefighters?
No, sir, they're all, they're cross-trained.
They're firefighters that have additional medical certifications?
Yes, they're cross-trained.
Got it, okay.
And, and I have a few folks that just have the fireside, but I have medical personnel that's assigned to each station. So that there's somebody in that area that can do the medical. You know, they can work on, they can do, they can hand stuff and do things that, that, that personnel level of training can tell them to do. They just, they can't do anything unless that person's with them.
Got it.
Commissioners, you got any more questions?
Thank you for your time, Chief.
Thank you.
I will, I will tell you one more thing that, that's coming down the pipes, and I don't, I, I made a small note up here about it. I don't know, they, they, they're looking at revamping the OSHA standard to do with the fire service. Right now it's what called a fire brigade standard. Now they're gonna make it an all-hazard emergency service response. And some of the things that they put into it that I've read so far, it's six hundred and some pages long. So it's a lot to go through and it, they, they put it out in February, they put it out for public comment until May sixth to start with. Now they've extended it to June twenty-first for public comment. But they're talking about anywhere from, uh, depending on who you talk to, twenty-some thousand dollars to a hundred-and-some thousand dollars added to your budget to be able to comply with. So just a lot of medical monitoring into it. If we have fifteen exposures to, uh, uh, areas that are contaminated, what they call smoke environments and stuff, then they have to go, have to send them back and be medically monitored again. They're required to have a physical every year, which we do already. But there's parts of it that we're already meeting, but there's some of it that we don't meet. They, they wanna look at, uh, putting in, uh, a bunch of written policies. So every type of call we go to, I gotta have a written policy for it. It can't be generalized, it's gotta be specific. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare. So I, I'll reach out, U-May or, or whatever and, and give you some up, up speed on it. It's up to public comment, so it's gonna take everybody. I mean, so, um, the more people can get to public comment on it and say, hey, you know, this is, they're trying to move too fast with it, I think. And don't get me wrong, they've got a lot of safety stuff in there that needs to come back, come about. But some of it is just gonna be too costly to affect it, uh, to, to move as quick as they're trying to move it. They gotta give some time to look for it to be able to meet, to meet.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ferguson?
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'm not gonna read your memo to you. You have before you the resolution to apply for the grant, which is required. A survey that shows you what the condition of the inlet was when the Corps did the survey in March. Your grant application and a budget amendment. If you ask if you guys pass this resolution and say apply for the grant today, is this gonna happen? I cannot give you a positive answer, there are a lot of obstacles in our way. The Oregon Inlet Task Force, David and I sat in on that meeting virtually on Monday. They did not have a quorum present. They have to give us permission to release the Miss Katie and it'll be May before they are scheduled to meet again. So one, they have to give up the asset for us to be able to use it. The reason it's before you today instead of your April thirtieth meeting is at the, um, least amount of time that it might take. It's taken thirty days to get the grant process through the state. We can't move forward without a grant because we don't have the funds to do that. So if you don't vote on it today, it would definitely jeopardize the project. We couldn't wait until the end of the month. As far as the regulators go, our permit, you know, um, does have environmental windows and we are entering those. So our coastal engineer's having to talk to the regulators and I'm not sure if they will let us dredge. Last time it was emergency status and they didn't make an exception. It will, you know, we'll continue to work through that, but that's another obstacle. I did want to make one note because there is a time crunch here. The state started a preview of the application, they requested that, um, to try to help out on their end. And they're waiting to see if you guys pass it today. But on page eight of your packet, they ask that we put the end contract date as, um, November to allow six months versus the amount of time that we said the project would take just in case things get in the way. So I wanted to make you aware that the final application that will be submitted, should you say that you want to move forward, that that one date is going to change at the state's request. And I believe that is all I had until you guys get ready for your motion that you want to vote. I'll be glad to answer questions. But with your motion, because this is time sensitive, I would ask that you have it so that the motion includes submitting the resolution and the grant paperwork to the state and also, uh, giving the authority to the town manager to do all follow-on paperwork with contracting. So therefore it wouldn't come back before you again. When we got the grant, he'd sign off on it and when it was time to contract with the dredger, he'd sign off on it.
Anybody have any questions from Ms. Ferguson? If anybody wants to make a motion? Is everybody awake?
Can you, um, can you state what that motion you wanna?
Yes. So I said with the timeframe that we're working with, 'cause typically we'll, when, when a digital, digital grant comes back to you through the state, we'll bring it back before you again with this timeframe we're working with. I would ask that your motion be to accept the, um, resolution and the budget amendment, but also give the town manager authority to execute all follow-on paperwork with contracts.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept what you said.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Couple of points, um, first of all, there's no risk here that we're gonna get stuck with a whole bill, is that right? Even though we're given authority to proceed?
No, if we did not get the grant, we would not follow through with contracting.
Okay.
So the grant would have to be given an answer of affirmative. We would not execute that contract without the grant coming through for the, uh, six fifty-six, six twenty-five, Sean on the memo.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
I guess I got a couple more. I mean, given where we're at, it seems like this is the thing to do. I'm, I'm still trying to get comfortable with this whole arrangement, 'cause, I mean, it's my understanding the Corps is legally responsible for keeping the inlet open and navigable, but somehow now we're always taking responsibility. We're running the projects, we're paying our share. Oak Island isn't paying anything. Everything's an emergency, gotta do it right now. So I'm just hoping going forward, it seems like we do dredging every year or on a regular basis, if we can get it into the plan, if we can plan in ahead, if we can put it out there so that we're not, you know, in a special meeting emergency, having to come up with money like this, so.
Well, we do plan ahead. So the first thing is, as part of your advocacy efforts this year, uh, we did ask for money to go into the Corps' budget, which is operation and maintenance for dredging. It was one point five million dollars. If the federal government puts money in their budget, great, we can be on their cycle, but we're still at their mercy for when they schedule to come here. Right now, for example, when this was presented at the, um, Shallow Draft Inlet Meeting in March, they said that they would be here May first through fifteenth. Then at the Oregon Inlet Task Force meeting this week, they said, based on where they are now with other projects, that we've slipped to the end of May. And weather could affect that. So one, there's a chance they won't get here if something else happens before our main tourist season starts, in which case the Miss Katie could sidecast like they did the last time. But two, even though they have money in the teal light, right now they have four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in their budget to work with for operation and maintenance. If there's not money appropriated by Congress, they're not gonna be able, they can only work under their authority when they have money. So that's why it's important for us to continue to advocate for that. So we are advocating ahead of time and we are just at the mercy of their schedule for when they schedule us. We have asked to be on a quarterly cycle.
So whenever they schedule, then it's a fire grill like this to do something, is that?
Well, if they can get here quarterly and keep the inlet open and they operate on the million and a half that we're asking for, then we're in great shape and we don't have to do something like this. But if the inlet gets in the shape it is now, then we get into an emergency situation where we need to do something different, which is why the town was proactive in going to get their permit in the first place. It's my understanding, unless something has changed, that Oak Island does not hold a permit for this. Prior to me coming to work here back in, we got our permit finalized in twenty fifteen. I came here in twenty fourteen. Prior to that, one evening, Al and David and the prior shoreline manager went over to Oak Island to ask them about participating in the permit meeting process at that time, and they were not interested. So unless they have gotten a permit in the last year, they don't hold a permit to do this work and the county doesn't either. We're the only permit holders. We're the only permit holders.
But they could still contribute?
But their philosophy has been that they don't want to contribute if we're putting the sand on our beach, just as we haven't contributed when the sand is being put on their beach.
You mean piped on the beach versus?
No, this is a hopper.
No, the Miss Katie's a hopper.
This'll be near shore, right?
Right.
Okay.
Which is a good thing.
Okay.
That side draft is, that's silly to me.
The widening that we did piped to the beach, on the beach. This is in the water, off the shore, that's better, there's not a storm washing it out, that it actually comes in and goes to our beach. But, in the resolution, the value is keeping the inlet open and navigable so we can go out, and I would think Oak Island gets that benefit if they use that inlet, and I would think some of them are. So, that was my point. No more.
That's what we used to think too, Tom.
I'm coming up to speed.
That's, that's what we used to think too, but not the way it's played out. Um, I, I'd like to, to add into that if, if I can. No one can appreciate the fact that this is an imperfect tool to do work that someone else is supposed to do, and it's our circumstance, and we're doing the best we can with it. And we've done, uh, human's work on being able to accomplish the last project. This is, this is really the only tool that we have available to do this kind of work in these kinds of circumstances. It, it, it is not the best way to go, to go about it. Programatically, it's difficult to get organized, there's just a, a host of issues with it. One thing that will make it better, Christie mentioned the, um, we've got to go to the regulators and get some relief on the environmental windows. One thing will make that better so that it's not such a Chinese fire drill, uh, such a, a cacophony of, of uncoordinated efforts, that's probably be a better term, is to have our permit revised to go to year-round dredging, um, which would really mimic the Corps' authorization. Okay? The Corps gets to do it any time, but our permit has an environmental window. So, that, that's one particular initiative that we can take, and we're going to, um, we, we haven't detailed that out yet, but, um, I'd like to pursue actually budgeting for that type of effort in the upcoming year so that we can go ahead and get our permit to reflect, in essence, the same capability that the Corps has. So, that's, that's one little shave off of this, um, process that's, that's problematic for us in the short term, but that's all I have.
I would just remind the present board that the previous board curtailed any activities in regards to terminal drawings and jetties, unlike our neighbors, as we see up and down the coast, even in the last few days on, I believe it was WECT was talking about Carolina Beach, and, uh, they're looking at possibilities of doing something for stabilization of Carolina Beach Inlet. Uh, is that your understanding, Captain? And, uh, you know, one of the arguments has got, that has gotten lost recently is, yeah, we can pour a million dollars plus in this inlet every year, every year, every year, as we're doing now, or we can look at something more business-minded to try to slow down that yearly expense and go ahead and do something more permanent. Um, just like to remind everybody where we are, and the trend is, and I believe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, the Corps is considering something more permanent as one of their alternatives, and we're, Ms. Ferguson, you correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that report gonna be coming out this summer?
No, Chief's final report is due 2026.
Twenty, that's next, it's, uh, two years out. Okay, that's understood, okay. Anyway, need to run it like a business, folks, but, all right, we've got a motion, a second, we've discussed it, we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's your now, it's Madam Clerk. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. We're on...
Before everybody goes, please, may I have a second on that?
Sure.
Just, y'all might wanna hear, hear this. Okay, now, um, this, this is gonna be a heavy lift to, to pull this project off. Last year was the first time that we did it, and I didn't know if we were gonna be able to get it done last year, and I'm in the same place that I was last year. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get this done. There's a, there's a lot of coordination in going on, and just like Christie preaches her remarks with, just 'cause we're applying for this grant doesn't mean that it's, that it's a go. I, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get this project off the ground and going, so, just, just so y'all are aware of that, um, that it's not a done deal, there's still a bunch of work that's gotta be done.
I have a question. So, I mean, this is a budget meeting, to talk about budget, are you saying it'd be in this year's budget, or does it shift to next year, or how would that be accounted for?
It's, it's gonna, it's gonna depend on how these, how it works out.
Okay. It's, it's in this year's budget now, though?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And this budget amendment provides for it to be in this year's budget.
Okay. All right, thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you.
All right, we ready to move on to number five. Mr. Hewitt, you gonna cover budget workshop?
Uh, yes, sir, I can. I know that, um, we've been working on, uh, general fund revenues, and, uh, you've got your, let me get mine. You've got your general fund estimates, general fund revenue estimates, uh, before you. We've given some attention to those on a line-by-line basis. I don't know how you want to proceed. The, um, the two, the couple of things that jump off the page at me are, of course, the, you know, the, the tax rate number, and then some of the, some of the larger, um, items in there, like, you know, cumulatively, building inspections is a, is a pretty big number, and then the local option of sales tax. Um, and we're, we're fairly, um, solid on those. We, generally speaking, we don't see a lot of growth in any of these revenues. Um, we, we, we just don't see a lot of growth in them. Um, even trying to factor into what specific local conditions are, those are probably only relative to, like, the building revenues, is, is what we're thinking. So, um, you know, beyond that, I, I don't wanna start at, you know, line one and start going down, but I'll do whatever you want, want to do. Or, or I and my staff.
I mean, obviously, the big-ticket item on general fund is ad valorem, so it does say, "We're gonna stay at 14 cents."
Well, that's, that's just, um, to show what it, what the calculation is if you carry the same tax rate, and that was 14 cents. Now, um, the other side of the equation, uh, is that you don't, we haven't done the expenses, so you don't know what, what it's gonna be down or up hypothetically, um, if, if, uh, here's a number for you, $238,000, that's what a penny gets you, okay? On the, on the existing tax, on the new tax, existing, new existing tax base, um, y'all would have options on what you wanted to do with the overage, um, in terms of revenue on that, whether you wanted to consider a tax decrease, whether you wanted to consider escrowing excess funds, that'll be up y'all, but just for this exercise, we, um, ran the calculation on the existing tax rate at the new projected tax base.
But, I, I think from the audit, the taxes actually, tax revenues actually went down a little bit, and I remember we talked about it, I think it was collections was the, I mean, tax revenues were not going up, other than the increase in the, in the rate, is that?
Um, the collection rate was slightly better last year. I think that went down, uh...
The collection rate was slightly better last year. The thing that went down last year as compared to the year before was the prior year payments, so the...
Okay.
Payments that were late, basically.
Okay. But our valuation, total property valuation, is not really going up significantly. Is that a valid statement, is it?
No, that's not a valid statement at all.
Well, I mean, uh, 'cause our tax, okay, so that gets, that's a question, then, the taxes should, ad valorem should go up too, if the property base is going up.
Well, it did, Tom. It's, it's, uh, it, it did.
That's not what the auditor said.
Well, I'm, we're, we're talking, we're talking this year.
Well, we're projecting it, right. So, I just, trying to get, testing the number, basically. And it's 99.2% collection.
That was in last year's audit.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's the elephant in the room, is the ad valorem taxes, that's why.
It always is. It always is.
I've got just a couple, they're cats and dogs questions, they don't add up to anything, but, um, inquiring minds wanna know. Interest on savings and investment, I see the previous budget years and where we are this year, you know, our, our 24, 25 estimates, like, 20 grand, and it looks like so far this year, we have like 35. Do we expect a lower return on the money, or just being conservative?
Yeah, just being conservative. I mean, I'm sure rates will continue to fall a little bit, but I don't know how much.
Kind of an under-promise, over-deliver, then.
Well, but you also gotta consider that you just, that you, uh, that you made a contribution to the, um, Inlet and Beach Reserve Fund...
Yeah.
That took the, that took the general fund balance down also.
I got you.
So, the, the, the big tick is not as big as it was before. Now, based on what we get to close out and see what falls back to fund balance, it could get back up, but I don't think it's gonna get back up in the order of magnitude that, uh, you move money over. So, there's a couple things.
So, each fund then earn its own return, so that's showing up in that balance then?
Yeah.
So, it's not like we're...
It's parsed out.
Losing, it's just, we've divided, and they're each earning separate.
Yeah, it's going to the different fund. The, the general fund number will be different.
Yep.
I don't think I have any more questions on it, David, myself.
Okay, are we moving to B part?
But, yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that we, since there were two line items, it was general fund and tax rate, we just took care of those, and then the, uh, the B part fund revenue, um, you know, the, the big ones there are, um, of course, occupancy tax collection, and as we've, we've stated before, although we're, we're keeping a close eye on it, we're thinking that we're going to end up 30 June at, uh, 4.05 on the occupancy tax collections as the actual, and so, we're just, uh, regurgitating that number as the projection for next year. Um, now, you know, the, the thought process, and we've done some checking around, um, the thought process is, is that oc, what we're hearing, and, and it may not be correct, but what we're hearing is that occupancy is down, but the rates are up, which equals flat. So, that's, that's, um, and we've, we've, uh, checked with the TDA and several other realty management companies that aren't just located on Oak Island to get a pulse of what it might be, and, and that's what we're hearing, uh, from the market rents. So, um, we, we believe that it's, uh, 4.05 on the occupancy tax projection.
How much information are they willing to share? I mean, you know, we're coming into the...
It's, it's conversational...
Okay.
And, and nothing, nothing, uh, willing to be written, written down.
I mean, reservations kinda lead the rates, if reservations are up or down, you would think that's a leading indicator.
And then you got the professional, uh, professional shoppers on, on the rates that wait till the last three days for the super saver, and all that stuff comes together, too. But, we, we have no, we have no definitive reason to believe that occupancy will, will be anything less than what it was this year, although we're not, don't have any confidence that it'll be greater.
And no early storms, please.
Oh, thank, yeah, right.
Yeah, I had a, a comment on, this is, I guess, gets back to that interest, 'cause this one, we're already at 122,000 and had 46, so is that just 'cause the B parts got a bigger fund balance it's investing, or as compared to what we were just talking about for general fund?
Um, yeah, it's, it's got a bigger balance that's invested, but it's also got, on some of that money that's invested, it's only allowed to be used for certain things, so it's in a different investment account, it's not quite as liquid as general fund.
Okay. Okay, so it earns a higher return. I guess the other one to me is parking revenue.
Yeah.
Can you just explain the rest now? Higher rates, and we're going to year-round, right?
Yeah, I, I believe this 697, 500, unless there was a reason why this got changed, uh, uh, it should really be $750,000.
No, you gotta split it between the two lines.
Ah, yeah, now, now it's 750.
Yeah, when you add all...
She's like, "Hold on."
When you add off-street for the pier parking lot, and then the 697, you get the 750.
That accounts for the parking spaces we lost on...
Yeah, we, we, we went through an exercise and pulled those out, and factored in year-round parking, and the rate increased, and threw them all up in the air, and kinda came down around 750.
So, so, 52.5 for the pier, is that, how did we come up with that?
It's, it's, um, I wanna say there's 80 spaces there, and that's a, a pro-rata apportionment we make.
But it's not based on the full 80 because there's handicap parking spaces there as well, so those have to be deducted.
Yeah. We, we count, we count spaces and proportionally break it out.
You just took a percentage of the...
Oh, that's right. Because the, because the, um, the vendor doesn't provide us with, um, actual, this space was used 110% of the time, and this one was never used, and so, therefore, it doesn't get any money. That's, that's not the logic that we use, and it's strictly, our approach on that is based on the fact that if someone buys a year-round pass, they park anyway.
Yeah, I, I, I was, I got the data from Otto, which was very helpful, I was just kinda playing with it, and basically, he was saying that 30% of the parking, like 14,000 spaces, were at the pier, so 30% of all parking on the island...
Well, I disagree with Jim's math on that, um, and we, we, he hasn't shared that with me, and I disagree with that, because the, the, the number of spaces that we've, we've got, that's how many we have, and we earn so much money based on all of the spaces. I mean, for, for Jim to tell us that he's now got information on the usage and the revenue that goes with that is counter to what we've been led to understand. I don't know how, he told us that that was not objectively attainable, so if he's giving you that, he's either got new information that he hasn't shared with me, or he's making a sub... with me, or he's making a subjective evaluation. That is not quantitative in nature, enough in nature to make the apportion between the revenue blocks.
I think, I guess I got it from him, because I got something originally that was provided, I think Heather, you sent it, and then I asked for more data or a question, and I got, basically, I got from him the number of scans, or whatever he wants to call it, per zone per month. So, the pier is one zone, so this is, you know, it's 14,000 scans, so 14,000 times he checked the valid plate, I mean, individual plate, so that's...
Well, that's not the way we're set up to account for the revenue.
Well, the only, only reason I'm bringing it up is, if you apply that method, you come up with $150,000 parking at the pier versus 52,000. So, it's, you know, how much money are we making or losing at the pier?
I'll be glad if we get $750,000 in total regardless of where you attribute it to.
Can we give David that data?
Yeah, yeah. I thought I got it from the town, but maybe I got it back from him.
Or maybe you did, but I hadn't read it.
I'll send it to you. I'll send it.
Because, because, what's he calling a scan?
Well, I'll send it to you. Basically, the way I interpreted it was, as you said, somebody buys a season permit, you can't say that it went to the pier versus East End or wherever, but at the pier, when they're counting cars, he's got to count of how many cars, how many license plates he's scanned at the pier. So, that's my interpretation. I'll...
I really hope that we're not trying to count how often a parking space is used at a particular location in order to sign a dog value to it. I really hope that we're not going to attempt to go down some type of rabbit hole like that. I just don't see any, I just don't see the utility in it. But, I'll do what y'all want.
No, that's not the, I mean, the intent is figure out where the money's coming from, you know, which spots are the most popular spots, and how popular are they? Are they full, or are they not full?
Well, I mean, that may, that may be a question from the board, but it's not been a question that the board has tasked for any type of analysis to the staff. Matter of fact, we're going to need somebody else start counting cars if that's the type of detail that y'all want.
I mean, the bottom line's what I'm interested in, the $750,000 would be absolutely fine. I don't care if it parks legally anywhere.
Thank you for that.
I had to say that, Fred. I'm not overloading.
But, if you count the number of scans, that doesn't account for whether it's a season pass or they bought it that day.
That's correct.
So...
Like I said, the intent was, where are most of the cars parking? And are the, I mean, for example, 800 Block is jam-full. I mean, it's like 100% utilized all the time, according to his numbers, so...
So, is the pier?
The pier is, yes. So, there are certain spots that are just full, and there are certain other spots that just don't have that much utilization.
Well, I mean, I'll make a comment there. Tom, what you're putting forward is something that has not been tasked to look into. You know, we have a parking program, and we get a check delivered to us, and we deposit the money in. We have no, and the board has not had any discussion or expressed a desire on trying to figure out the utilization rates of individual area parking spaces.
I'm primarily interested for items like Block Q, which is how much parking is there? If we're going to eliminate spaces, what's the financial impact of eliminating half the boat spots? That's where I was curious. This was my own little digging into numbers, because I like to dig into numbers, but it's, it is what it is, you know, and the bottom line is...
I'll agree with that.
We've got a $750,000 budget for next year, that's what we're expecting in parking revenue, and we're going to plan for it.
And?
Yep.
If you have any insights, what I would find very useful, if there's any insights or a way to discern, what's the impact going to the all-year-round parking? What's the impact on reducing the number of spaces? Don't know. What's the impact of increase in the fees? Don't really know.
Until we go through a season.
Until we go through a season.
Cruise input.
So, those are, those are the two biggies, I believe, in B part? Yeah. Those are two biggies.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, sweet, Miss Mayor.
Ms. Ferguson, would you like to floor?
I would like to add on to something that David just said, because he asked, what's the impact of that? And I'd just make the board aware that I can answer part of that question. And although we're just talking about revenues, the impact of moving to year-round parking is the expenditure side that you saw previously is going to change, because we're going to have to have portages year-round and cleaning year-round, and so those are going to be changes that are going to be from the original documents that were in these meetings.
Ladies and gentlemen, where are we on the agenda? Have we, oh, yes, sir.
Don't forgive me down here.
You're a long ways, I couldn't see you.
Yeah. Small blessing. One quick question. We have, in this year's budget, we have a CAMA grant for 420, and the question is, is that the same 420 that was the DEQ grant on the next line?
What page is that on?
About midway, a little below midway, it's just a, we've got CAMA grants and DEQ grants, is that the same money?
So, the, the, it is, CAMA and DEQ for these purposes are the same entity. So, the 166 that was there and the 50 that you see for this year, that 5329 is your walkway at 441.
Okay, I just...
The 420 is the Block Q grant, so...
That's what I was thinking.
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear on.
Does this conclude our agenda?
Number six.
Number six. You made it all look...
You had a smart feel today, didn't you?
I like to make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. Thank you all for coming. We're adjourned.